First is pledge allegiance.
Are you sure?
Forgot about that part.
Where am I? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two items before we get into the items on consent, the approval of the minutes for the EAR workshop on September 19th. Minutes, anybody have any?
I wouldn't hear.
Move approval?
Got a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a second from Jerry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign carries unanimously. And then on the meeting of September 25th.
Move approval?
Got a motion, so I'm a second. Greg's second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign for disapproval. All right, good. We've got two quasi judicial items on for the item, one on the item of consent and one not on the item consent. So if anyone who cares if to, if they have any presentation or speaking, if you'd stand and get sworn in up front, then we'll save some time later, please. Anyone else, just any engineers or applicants? Okay, just in case.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. First item is the Children's Home Society requests for major site plan approval to construct a nine-unit multifamily residential building. It's on consent. Would anyone care to pull this item? If not, I need a motion to approve.
Move to adopt as presented.
Got a motion, a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. That item approves unanimously. Next item is the Indian River County Utility Storage Tank. It's not on consent. It's a request for administrative permit use approval to construct a 3 million gallon reuse water storage tank. Who, what, all right, Stan?
I'll take that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Stan Boland County Planning Director. The request before you all tonight is from the Utilities Department, County Utilities Department, for a reuse water storage tank. It requires administrative permit use approval. The site is shown here on the zoning map. It's a portion of an overall A1 zone property that is under county control, mostly for recreation uses. You can see on the next map, the land use map, the REC, the REC, Land Use Designation shows all the holdings of the county. The site is located on the north side of 77th Street, east of 58th Avenue, and east of the lateral G Canal. This aerial shows the canal and 77th Street and the Hobart Ballfields. The actual subject site is over here on the north side of 77th Street. Couple of things to point out that you saw in the staff report. There is an existing sort of driveway area back through the trees here, and this is a native upland area, trees understory, ground cover that's native, and that's going to remain and stay in place. The improvements, which I'll show you on the next slide in a moment, is in this area that has some sparse pine trees in it and some cleared area. This is the basic site plan layout. The natural, the native area I was speaking of earlier is right here, and again, that will remain in place. And the proposal is to improve a driveway and put in some stormwater improvements here toward the back. Also install a tank, a storage tank, that has a height of approximately 30 feet and a diameter of 130 feet. It's a 3 million gallon tank to hold reuse water. There's also a pump house facility that's unmanned, that's right here on this side of the proposed driveway, and there are two spaces and a loading area that's shown. It's the landscape plan, and forgive me, but north is to the right here in 77th Street, here on the left-hand side, just to challenge your orientation skills. Again, to preserve trees in this particular area, and there is actually landscape improvements in the sidewalk that will be constructed along, let me go back here for a second, along 77th Street. But again, this kind of shows a bigger shot of the proposed development area, and there are some landscaping improvements toward the back that'll also be put in, that are far enough away from the canopy trees that are going to be preserved so they can, they should be able to grow pretty well. Again, the basic site information that this is a 3 million gallon reuse water storage tank and pump house and its various reasons, this is a good location for it. There are parking improvements, landscape improvement along 77th Street, along with the five-foot wide sidewalk, and again, the natural upland vegetation area that's going to be preserved. It meets all of the specific land use criteria for this type of limited utilities use, and it really is just for the reuse tank itself. That's the only, only type of utility that's proposed here. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant the administrative permit use approval, with the condition that the landscaping and sidewalk improvements be put in place prior to issuance of a CO. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Stan. Any questions of Stan or the staff on this? Okay, this is administrative permit approval. Would anybody else from the county that is involved with this care to speak? If not, this is not a public hearing, so I'd need a motion if you're all ready. We're not going to ask any more questions.
I move to approve.
Jerry moves.
Second.
Richard.
Second.
May I?
Oh, Fred.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you. The figure item tonight is a public hearing. This is to review the Indian River County Comprehensive Plan Evaluation and Appraisal Report. We've been doing this in steps up until now, and now we have the whole book, and since no one can see it, I know that the public would like to see this thing. They're for sale for about $4,000 at the county office.
I have my own that's a good deal.
There's six that are cheap, could be given away. But what I thought we would do is if in our backup, if you go to the last, last item in our backup, in it, there is the, and I guess it's this Attachment 2 is kind of the background unless, I'm sorry, Bob, you want to go through these again or not? I'm sorry. I was just going to go to Attachment 2 and walk through them one at a time, but.
Actually, we've got a plan.
Is it quicker than my plan?
It is quicker, it's quicker than your plan. It's quicker than your plan.
All right, go ahead.
Actually, let me tell you what we plan to do tonight. Because a lot of people haven't heard of the year, and there are people watching on TV, I'd really like to just go through the process again and give you an overview. But what we were thinking after that is instead of going over each element and going over some of the objectives in each element, what we thought would be best is if we go over the comments that we got from the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and hearings, and that's what we propose to do. So if that's okay, the bad news is I do have a PowerPoint presentation tonight. But I do want to emphasize that we are here to go over the county's evaluation and appraisal report tonight, and hopefully, what we would like from the Planning and Zoning Commission is we'd like at the end of this for you to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners regarding the disposition of the EAR. And our recommendation is that you recommend that the Board approve it. And I know you've seen everything in this document before. I know it's a pretty formidable document. It's pretty intimidating when everything is all put together like that. But as I said before, even though you've seen all these elements in draft form before, I think it's important to go over the process again for everyone involved. And what we have here is a graphic that I think really illustrates the big picture of the planning process, and it shows what we do, and not just us in doing comprehensive planning. I think companies do this when they do strategic planning. People do it in their individual lives, even though they don't realize that they're doing it. And the first thing that's involved in the planning process is figuring out what you have, actually collecting data. Then the next part is analyzing that. What does it mean? And then after you get to that point, you have to determine what do you want? What are the targets you want to achieve? And those are the objectives that are put in the plan. After that, you have to figure out how can the objectives be achieved? What are the policies? What are the strategies? What are the actions that need to be done? And then how are those implemented? They're implemented through rules, regulations, codes, ordinances. And then we get to the point that we are at right now, an evaluation and a feedback process. This is probably the most important part of any plan. If you make a plan and you implement it, and you don't go back and see how it's working, you really don't know how you need to change it or modify it to make it better. And actually, if you look at this circle that we've got here, in the year process, we have again done most of those activities that are shown, shown here in the circle. For the year, we've collected data, we've done analysis, we've evaluated the objectives, and we've assessed the policies. And then the last part of this process is after the year is done, then we go back and change the plan, consistent with the findings of the year. Again, I want to graphically show you where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. The county's current comprehensive plan was adopted in 1990. Consistent with state law that had a tighter evaluation and appraisal timeframe back then, we did our first year six years after adoption in 1996. That year, like this one, identified a lot of changes that needed to be made in the plan. So a little over a year after the year was done, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the year-based amendments for the plan. Now we're back 10 years after the Board adopted those year-based amendments, and we're doing this year. This year's due in about six or eight weeks. It's got to be to the Department of Community Affairs by December 1, 2008. And after that goes to the Department of Community Affairs, we have to work on actually amending the comp plan to reflect the changes that everyone determines need to be done based on the year. And that'll be done in the next year or a little over a year. State law requires that there be a number of specific elements in a comprehensive plan. You've seen each of these, you've seen draft year chapters for each of these elements, but it's the whole list, and they're all in this document that you've been given. Actually, tonight, right now, you're not operating as the Planning and Zoning Commission. You're operating as the local planning agency. And it's the local planning agency of every local government in the state. It's the LPA's responsibility to prepare the year and actually undertake the year process. When I just showed you those elements and sub-elements, they come to 15. We've got 15 elements and sub-elements there. And we have actually been working on this year for about two years. We've done it in-house, we've done it with existing staff, we've done it on a time-available basis, so it's taken a long time. We've ratcheted up activity in the last few months and gotten a lot down there. And all of the year elements have been reviewed by various county committees. Now, some of them have, the Planning and Zoning Commission is the only committee that reviews the element, but other elements have been reviewed by one or more of the committees. And the year will be reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners at a public hearing. Actually, at this time, let me just tell you the schedule that we've got. Tonight, we hope to get a recommendation from you that we can send to the Board of County Commissioners with the year document. After this, we plan having two workshops at the Board of County Commissioners. They're going to be October 20th, that's a Monday, and that'll be at, I think, 1:30 in the afternoon. And the other one will be October 23rd, that's a Wednesday, I think it's the 23rd, 23rd, at 9 o'clock in the morning.
Are you going, excuse me, are you going to go, you know how we work through several elements in one meeting and another? Are they going to work through in a similar fashion and then eventually take it up as a whole again?
Yes, yes. We're going to get through as many as we can on the 20th. If we get through the whole document, we don't even need the meeting on the 23rd. But we anticipate most, some of the elements on the 20th, some on the 23rd. If we need another workshop, we'll do that. But we're also planning final adoption hearing on November 18th. What we've got this year is, November 11th is a holiday, so we can't have it on that Tuesday meeting, so.
Once it clears this area, if it does tonight from us, then it moves into the Board of County Commissioners' hands for their workshops and their public hearings, and that's it for our commission or the planning agency until, we don't, we have nothing else to do with it, is that correct?
That's correct, until you start seeing the year-based amendments.
Until we start seeing the amendments and/or the comp plan changes.
Yes, yeah.
At the meeting on the 20th, what time is that?
The 20th is at 9:00 in the morning. No, no, 20th is at 1:30 in the afternoon, and the 23rd is 9:00 in the morning.
Are you starting out with the future land use element?
Yes, that's our plan.
So we'll be doing the future land use element at 1:30 on the 20th?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to call your attention to some of the attachments we have to the staff report. The comp plans in Florida are required by state law, and the state adopted Florida Administrative Code Chapter 9J5, and that has all the specific requirements of comp plans. And when an year is done, we have to make sure that we comply with all of the 9J5 requirements. We have a matrix in your backup that identifies every one of those 9J5 requirements and where it is addressed in the year. We've got specific citations. That's a pretty long matrix. There are a lot of requirements. We also have the quality of life matrix back there, and I think you all remember when you had a quality of life workshop. It was, I think, an entire afternoon, maybe a year and a half ago or so. A number of bucket issues came out of that.
Right. I remember the buckets. It's been a couple of years, hasn't it?
I think it's probably been a couple of years. We have every one of those issues identified in a matrix, specifically the ones that were, that we said were appropriate to be addressed in the year process. We've identified how we've addressed them and given citations for that. As I indicated, the year elements have been looked at closely with some, and some of the county committees have gotten more into the year process than others. Some have had several meetings. Some of the committees actually have several elements to look at, like the Utilities Advisory Committee has the potable water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste sub-elements, and some of the others have multiple elements. I think we, we have to give the award to the Economic Development Council. They have looked at the year at 14 different meetings. And I think Scott Carson is here today, and he may have some comments on it. But I think we really appreciate all the committees taking the time and effort, looking at the year and giving us some feedback. The more people look at it, the more people that can weigh in, I think, the better document that we end up with. When you go through and look at the year document, all the chapters are organized the same. We identify the conditions at the time the plan was last updated, and we identify existing conditions. Then we have an analysis section, and several of them, those are, the analysis section's pretty extensive. Then we have the most important part of the year document, the evaluation of objective achievement and the assessment of policy implementation. And in those sections, we've got, we identify what we think the distribution, the, what should be done with the objectives and policies, whether they should be maintained, deleted, revised, or whatever. And then we also have an identification of needed future action. We've got that for each of the elements. As you know, the county's comprehensive plan's a policy document, and with a policy document, it's really important to understand what goals, objectives, and policies are. And I know we've gone over this before, but it's important to go over it all the time. Actually, I'm constantly telling my staff about this. But a goal's a big picture. Generally, it's not even achievable. It's like happiness.
Heard rumors about that condition.
Maybe that's, maybe that is achievable. But, and with, under goals, we also have objectives and policies. Objectives are ends, they're targets. And as I said before, policies are strategies or actions, how are you going to get there? And I think the most important point I want to make is that an objective really is an identification of an outcome that we want to achieve. What, do we want water quality to be better? Do we want endangered species to be saved? Do we want transportation levels of service maintained?
More bus stops.
Do we want more bus stops? It's important to identify and articulate what you want if you really expect to achieve it. And it's also real important, and if you actually get in and try to do an evaluation and appraisal report and write it, you find out how important it is to have measurable objectives with a time orientation. And we've done a lot better since we did our first plan in 1990. I think our plan right now has more measurable objectives. Policies, they're actions, they're things you're going to do. They're strategies and policies. And hopefully, if all the policies and strategies are followed, the objectives will be achieved. As I said, the basic part of this document, the most important part of this document is to evaluate the objectives, to see whether they were achieved, and whether we still need them, or whether we need to revise them, or delete them, or add other ones. And policies, it's similar. You don't achieve policies, but it's really important to look and see, did we actually do what we said we were going to do? And did it make a difference? And do we need to keep them, maintain them, delete them, or add more to them? I think it's also, in this year process, it's also good to look at the big picture. I can tell you, if you read the year document, one of the things you're going to find is we say in there that growth went exactly where it was supposed to go, when in the urban service area. It went at exactly the densities that we said it wanted to go at or less. And those are some of the big pictures. And if you don't agree with that, then that should be part of the evaluation and appraisal report. And if those aren't some of the things we wanted to achieve, you need to determine what is it that, what is it that we do want to achieve? What should be in there? Let me just give you some facts and figures. I think we've given you this incrementally by element, but now we're going to give you some overall numbers. In the entire comprehensive plan, the last time we updated, we've got 129 objectives. Based on our assessment, we determined that 96 of those 129 were achieved, 17 were partly achieved, 16 weren't achieved. And of those, we recommend that 14 be maintained as they are, 109 of them be revised, six deleted, and we also recommend that six new objectives be added. And obviously, we've gone over all this with you, and these are within all the 15 elements and sub-elements. We, in the current comp plan, we've got 806 policies. And when we look at them, when we assess them, we determined that we actually carried out 717 of them. 11 we carried out partially, and there were 78 that we didn't implement. And of all those policies, we recommend that 574 be maintained, 177 revised, 55 deleted, and we propose that 116 be added. Another attachment that we have to the staff report is we have a matrix of every single comment that we have received in this process. We've gotten some comments by email, we've gotten some by letter, we've gotten comments at all of the various meetings that we've had. Every one of those comments is identified in the matrix that's attached here, and we identify what staff's response is to the comment, and we identify the source of the comment, where it came from, whether it was at a workshop, or whether we got it from an individual, an organization. And we have a citation in that matrix showing where in the year it was addressed. And I think this is one of the most important parts of your backup. It shows that we take public participation seriously, we've looked at every comment, and with almost all of them, we've ended up making a proposed change to the, to the year. We've also, when we got comments from people, written comments either by email or by letter, we have or are in the process of responding to them, because I think it's important for people to know that we heard them and we're doing something about it. Obviously, you can see that some of the elements were more popular than others regarding public comment, and it's really not surprising when you look at the number of comments by particular element. And you can see, again, as we said, the Economic Development Council spent a lot of time and effort on the economic development element year, and they also had a lot of comments in those various meetings that they looked at the year. I jumped ahead. I am going to, in a minute, I am going to hand this off. The good news for you is I'm not going to give the whole presentation tonight. You're almost through listening to me. Let me just make a couple of statements. First of all, as I said, we're not going to go over every element. We're just going to go over the comments that we got at Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and workshops, and we're going to tell you how we've addressed those. We are available, though, we certainly can address any question or any issue on any of the elements that you have. So we can do that in the process. I also want to tell you that at the end of the meeting, what we really need is some direction, what changes do you want, what modifications need to be made, and we need to have a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Bob, within the scope, the scope of this, I see your, this matches our matrix, this the attachment 2 that you have up on the screen right now. I was, and the thought I had had earlier was that if you're going to, this is the part that I thought was kind of the heart and soul of this whole document for us right now, too. I was planning on that we would go through this, which is what you're going to do anyway, which is good, so we'll just follow along with you. At the end of each section, on each land, on each element, I think then we need to stop and let the public comment on the element. If we have any further discussion on the element, fine. We can either take the document in entirety, but it may be simpler just to approve or whatnot, and move it up element to element and then stack it at the end unless you all have an objection. But we need to deal with this as a whole, as one entity. If we do consensus along the way, that's fine, but if you have, if there's anything, we need to change this, if we're going to make changes as we go before we pass it on. So I don't know whether it's easier to prove them individually, or is it better? What do you think on how you would like to see that?
You're the chair, you can call.
No, I know, and I'm just asking him. I was thinking of doing it individually, because I think you stack it up, but I think at the end, maybe we have to reiterate that we passed this whole document forward, so.
Why don't we do Futuraneous, so that's one, and just.
Well, that's what, that's what, that's where we're going to follow through, and at the end of each element, we'll let the public comment, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Just a couple of things. We're not doing the entire attachment 2, which is all the comments.
Yeah, I know, that's, okay.
We're just doing the ones that were the Planning and Zoning Commission, so.
Doing the ones that you didn't like, the comments that were made against, those we're doing.
Actually, I wasn't going to put it that way.
That makes sense.
No.
Well, with that in mind, I mean, as we go through this, if we, if we miss something that one of you all want to comment on, we need to bring it up, but, okay? All right.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Shute right now.
Okay, Bill.
Lucky dog.
First dog in this hunt.
As I said, we're going to go over.
Your mic's not on, Bill.
Thanks. There's about 11 comments that we're going to go over for the future land use element, and then after that, there's one for Nick Parks and Rack, that I'm going to hit upon, and one for potable water and sub-element as well. With the first one, first public comment is a suggestion that the county not add a new policy to cap the Roseland Road commercial industrial node. And in response, the staff is pointing out on the slide there that there's opportunity to expand this node along US Highway 1. There is no opportunity, excuse me. St. Sebastian River is on the north side, and the city of Sebastian is at the south side. side. And with that comment, staff is recommending that the CI node cap be kept as originally proposed within the Roseland Neighborhood Plan.
Bill, could you put that aerial up?
Yes, actually, I've got a version here, and...
Can you show us where the county ends and the city of Sebastian begins, so we know exactly what areas you're talking about that are not zoned commercial, that are still in that area?
Okay, here we go. City Sebastian is right near where it says US, US Highway, and going north on US 1. So you have the St. Sebastian River up here coming out. Right here, the purple is an existing mobile home park. I believe that's being considered for annexation right now. And then next to that, you have, what is it, the Home Depot in here?
But that's already zoned commercial, right?
Right, right. So really, the only parcels are maybe right here.
So the only parcel you have in that area that is not zoned commercial along US 1 is the mobile home park and that one to the, yeah.
Right.
Will that go with the Sebastian annexation?
If the purple goes, it will...
But what you're saying, though, is we're cap, you're recommending we cap it at the red, and that's it?
So everything along US...
You need space to expand within that node without that property annexed or not?
Right, I believe it was around 55% developed. I think it, right now, it's around 55% developed, so.
Plenty of room.
Okay, so everything along US 1 is zoned commercial that the county has, except for the mobile home park and that other little parcel? Okay, so there's, I don't see any problem with staff's suggestion.
Okay.
Go on, to the next one. The next public comment is a suggestion to eliminate the prohibition for expanding commercial industrial nodes unless they are greater than 70% developed. Staff's response is that if a node is more than 70% developed, the node is approaching buildout, indicating a need for expansion. There's also some references in regards to mixed-use policies and the need for allowing mixed residential and commercial uses. And we, at the staff level, that's addressed in the, excuse me, addressed in the analysis section. And staff recommends that 70% requirement be kept.
I don't, I don't think any of us had a problem. That was actually an outside comment. We agreed with staff when that came up. Good.
The comment was made to restrict uses that are allowed in the IL zoning district. And staff's response is that this issue is addressed by the analysis section. In addition, in 2007, the Board of County Commissioners amended the LDRs to prohibit multiple different, multiple uses in the IL district. At this time, staff is not recommending any further use restrictions in the IL zoning district.
I don't agree with that. I think it's something that we still have not really looked at. The only IL use we've taken out is the cement plant. What else was taken out?
There's about four or five different types. Actually, I've got...
Oh, we went down.
Go ahead, Brian.
My name's Brian Freeman, county senior planner. And the amendment last year that took out concrete batch plants actually took out a whole host of uses in addition to concrete batch plants. You know, we went through the whole schedule of uses for industrial districts and analyzed which ones, you know, were appropriate for the IL district and which ones ought to be restricted to the IG district only. And so actually, there was a whole package of uses that were removed from the IL district.
Wasn't there some discussion about trucking terminals, though? That got, and it got left in?
Well, I think that use was left in because a lot of trucking terminals are associated with warehouse and distribution type uses, which would be appropriate in the IL district.
All right, the types of uses that were taken out included paper manufacturing, brick and tile, glass, concrete and cement, and non-metallic minerals. But the trucking terminal and so forth, that, I mean, that's consistent with distribution centers and warehouse and so forth, so that was not taken out. It was mostly looking at industrial processes that involved generally a lot of large storage, outdoor storage, a lot of raw materials and so forth. And those are the characteristics that were looked at and deemed more appropriate in IG.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the next slide. The Planning and Zoning Commission suggested that Objective 2 be qualified to recognize TNDs and new towns densities outside of the urban service area greater than 0.2 units per acre. And staff has gone ahead and revised Objective 2 to reference the new towns and TND projects.
We have come up later, in this particular issue, though, we also limited the amount of new towns. There was a recommendation on limits of new towns. It's not open-ended. This sounds open-ended, but it's not. Further on, we've limited new towns as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions about it? Okay, Bill?
What was the acreage on new towns, the maximum or the minimum?
It's a minimum.
This came up last night, and nobody seemed to know the answer.
I think it's 1,200 acres.
1,200 acres?
And it's within a mile of the, well, that was the old one.
1,200 within a mile, and then it's, it's a larger area requirement as you get further away from the urban service area.
And only two TNDs allowed on the east side of 95 and two on the west? I heard that last night.
Where were you last night?
And you were correct. What, what, what staff has been doing, when we've been negotiating the inter-local service boundary agreement, we're putting in some general parameters regarding new towns that cannot be exceeded. Those would be restrictions that, that we think we can live with. And we know based on the year document that the new town requirements have to be, have to be amended. So these would be constraints on future amendments. So yes, what we're proposing is no new towns in the AG 3 area, a maximum of two in the ag areas west of 95, and a maximum of two in the ag areas east of 95.
Okay, and another subject that came up was in the urban service, in the, the inter-local agreement?
Yes.
There was concern that the county may change their description of TNDs. And we're kind of doing that a little bit by taking the commercial out of the center of the TND and putting it on the perimeter. Is that going to be a problem?
Actually, we're looking at that more for the mixed use that we have in here. Right now, this is inside the urban service area. We allow accessory commercial in PDs, but it has to all be internal. And it's really not doable that way. So what we're recommending in the mixed use recommendations we have in the year, that that commercial could go out to a roadway, but it still needs to be integrated into a residential project.
So you don't feel that would have any impact on the interlocal?
No, and it doesn't affect Policy 18.3, which is the TND provision that Liberty Park has to meet.
When you say not doable, Bob, you mean financially viable?
Yes, yeah.
Right. Okay, Bill?
Under Objective 6, a comment was made that kennels and other uses in agricultural district should be restricted. In response, staff notes that the issue of uses in agricultural areas is discussed in the analysis section. Many uses, including kennels, are classified as administrative permit uses in AG districts and require Planning, Zoning, Commission approval. Based on staff's analysis and recommendation of the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Agricultural Advisory Committee also reviewed this use, the use list. No additional uses are proposed for reclassification of special exception uses.
Didn't, I thought that I was under the, I wouldn't argue with this, but I was under the impression that we did, I thought we had talked about something that had to do with the size, physical size of a kennel. You know, it's one thing to have a 10-dog kennel, and the concern was simply that at the time was people that had the horses, had horses and stuff, or animals that were skittish around dogs. Roosters, that we don't want to go into, but this, I was thinking, I know that we had the big, the bigger arguments that were, we've had the biggest confrontations when we have 75, or these, or 80 or 100-dog kennels. And I was under the impression that we were thinking about at least drawing a line on size.
And I don't remember us doing that, but let me, let me tell you what my recommendation would be. This is really something that doesn't need to be in the comp plan. We can amend the LDRs to reflect this, and we can still do that as an administrative permit criterion, not a special exception, but that, in some cases, you really don't want to be real specific in the comp plan, because if it ties your hands, it's real difficult to change it. And something like...
I understand. I just, in doing, in moving forward, since we're not trying, we don't have to be that specific right now at all, but I just, do we, if we can, I think we ought to consider not let that drop to the side. I think if you get something big enough, and I don't know 50 or 100, I don't know how, the size, but large kennels, I think we probably need to consider the possibility of special exception use or something.
Right, and I think what, the use is appropriate in ag, that's as far as we go with this?
I think it...
Why don't you just have, we can report back to you all in probably December or January. We've done some research not too long ago on this issue. And I think you're talking about scale and some of the regulatory aspects.
Right, I was just, I didn't know whether it needed to be here or...
We can report back to you guys and give you some of our research.
But I just didn't want to get it dropped to the wayside. Because I guarantee you, we're going to have a same conversation again the first time we get another big commercial kennel.
What about making a difference if you're in egg 1, egg 2, egg 3? I mean, according to size?
My point?
It depends on, I guess it's...
I mean, a way of solving the problem.
That may, it may be a consideration later, too. But I, I mean, I just think we need to know, they, we've got to come back on that anyway, so.
We'll do that.
All right, Bill?
The next public comment relates to the number of acres of land used for agricultural operations that the county wants to preserve. The comment was made that 100,000 acres is too low for a target for the year 2015. In response, staff revised the target acres to 110,000 acres.
You have any number you want.
Roll something out of the...
I thought somebody writes, buy something we grow. Okay.
So you're reducing it down?
He moved it up from when we had it the other night.
But from an existing, the current objective is 135?
Current, yeah, the current was 135, and they dropped it down. It's, you know, this is going to sound trite, but it's really going to be what it is. It's hard for the county to hold that up, unless, of course, you're doing like the government with the FDIC and stuff, and then we'll be happy to let you all contribute to the acres. By preferred stock in our acreage.
Stock would be good to do.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
All right. The next public comment was an objection to adding a policy allowing biofuel processing as an accessory use to agriculture operations. Staff's response is that biofuel processing facilities are important for the county's agricultural uses and for providing fuels. Consequently, the county should make the biofuel approval process simple. And staff recommends no change to the proposed new policy. There's a couple other factors, too. I'm just thinking back from the analysis.
The factor that's maybe missing, it's like this kennel, is that, and I didn't do my, maybe enough research here myself, I'm not sure when you get, there's stages in biofuel. There's crushing if you do Jof, Jof, I mean, there's certain, there's certain types of conversions and plants. And I'm not sure that when you get to a conversion plant, if it's not more industrial than it is, like a juice plant, like a processing plant. That's, you read the paper today, the ethanol plant is looking actually at the juice plant here. And it's, they're fairly intense, so I think that you need to be sure that you, that this is good, but that you have an out to limit yourself on the final process if the plant turns out to be really big.
Are you differentiating between biofuels and ethanol-type development?
Yeah.
No.
Not at this point.
I mean, you're calling it biofuels, but...
And I mean, that was, and that was the only caution, that we saw that was missing here, is that we, we have stayed, there are certain sizes of plants here, and I think that we need to make sure of the final stage of a biofuel plant. You don't want it sitting in...
Critical mass.
You may want it in egg 1, but you're not going to want it sitting in, or egg 2 or egg 3. You're not going to want it sitting in a residential area, for sure. Near residential.
May I ask a question on this? The recommendation of staff is to have biofuel processing plants as an accessory ag use. Can you tell us what approval process that would have to go through? Bob doesn't want to touch it. He's going, I just saw him hand it off the stand.
Yeah. Well, and it does kind of depend on the type of facility. If there's a large land holding and it's mostly, you know, accessory tends to be, you know, is fed mostly from, you know, the holding that surrounds it.
There are these that field and make fuel for on farm.
Right.
You can do on on-farm.
Right, and it does kind of depend on the technique used, but there are some that are like that, where they, you have to have the processing occur, or it makes economic sense to have it where the, where the stock is grown versus trucking into, you know, an industrial site. So there, differences there.
I also think we have the ability to make a determination of whether it really is more than an accessory use, and then it would be under agricultural industry, and it would be a special exception use.
Correct. As long as, as long as we have an out, that's the main thing.
It would come before this board, is what you're saying.
No.
If, if, if we determine it shouldn't be an accessory use, it would come before the board.
I would encourage you to...
Well, how does an applicant know that it's going to go through a special exception, or it's just going to be going through your, your office as an accessory use?
Administrative permit or something.
Not even that.
We have people coming in now, asking us about this. So I mean, it's not unusual at all for someone to come in and sit down, whether it's just an informal meeting or what have you. And we would ask the very same things that we're talking about now. What's, what's the size? What's the scale? What's the process? How many acres are contributing to it? So...
If you, if you see on the internet ethanol plants, I mean, an ethanol plant looks very similar to a juice processing plant, you know, bio, so I mean, it's, you just have, I want to be sure that we have a, something to stop at a size, you know, that's makes sense.
And where would that be written? I mean, would that be in the LDRs? Would that be, how would...
That's what I'm asking.
And where's, who's, who's going to control or what control the administrative permit process? Whether you decide it's going to be administrative permit or a, I mean, is that written somewhere? Is that just going to be pulled out of the ether as you hear each one of them? I'm trying to get you to commit to a quick, I know, you don't want to, but...
We have a definition in the code now of accessory use and structure, and it's normally or customarily, you know, less in area intensity. I mean, in other words, it's, the primary use, if you're looking, let's say you're looking at 100 acres, now let's make it 160 acres, a quarter section, and you're looking at how much of that area is contributing to, you know, is just a pure ag versus what area on that site is for processing and what the process involves. Those are the kinds of things we'll look at. Whether, whether the principal use is agriculture and a portion of the site is used, that's the sort of thing you look at with accessory use under our definition.
So it's somewhat judgmental in saying, we trust you.
Well, here's my concern, okay, then...
Trust but verify, right?
Right, exactly.
All right, here's my concern. A biofuel processing plant, be it solvent, crushing, heat, water, whatever, it's not going to be able to support itself by just the crop that is grown on 160 acres around it. We're going to be trucking in other crops, we're going to be processing that, and we're going to be trucking out fuel. So this type of use in an ag area, I think maybe we need to take a little closer look at this. And I, you know, I trust you all. I really do, but I'd like to see it in writing.
Well, it may be more appropriate, I mean, ag areas are very appropriate for that. Yeah, if, like egg 2 or whatever.
Look at the trouble we have with mining, and that's where she's going towards, the trucking and everything.
And let me just suggest some, the technology and the grants and the funding for this area, in this area of use that we're talking about, there's all flavors and varieties. I don't think anyone knows how many technologies.
Maybe looking at this at the next DAR.
And there, we have, different scale operations are being proposed. Some are very small, some are a little more intermediate, so there may be some that are more developmental and prototype that aren't full-scale production, and those may have, you know, much less intensity in some ways.
Could we just add something simple, simple in this statement that says, approval process simple, however, scale matters or some, we are cognizant that...
Once it goes something like they're supplying statewide, then you need to come...
Provided, provided the scale fits the operations or something.
So the Board of County Commissioners or something like that.
Just to indicate that we have something, discuss this, so we have...
If they're doing biofuels to run just for the operation of the farm, or some local county supply or something like that, I can see it. But once they start going statewide supply, then you're going to get scale out of it.
They're different scale plants, and that's all we're talking about.
Yeah, why don't we differentiate that the real small scale will be accessory, and if it's bigger, administrative permit use.
Right.
And it gives you an out, too.
Yeah.
So thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Bill?
Beat that horse to death, then we...
Well, there's a change. Comment number 8 relates to the... Comment number eight relates to the proposal to reduce the number of, oh, I guess that wasn't, I'm sorry about that. Comment number eight relates to the proposal to reduce the number of lots allowed within affidavit of exemption projects unless appropriate reasoning is provided. Staff recommends that the number of lots, it has been increased from the last time you saw it, allowed in affidavit exemption projects be capped at eight lots. This is based on the fact that typical sized agricultural land tracts are 40 acres, and eight is the highest number of lots that can be developed on 40 acres of land based on minimum lot size requirements for A1 zone property. And, you know, areas in particular are near the urban service boundary on 66th Avenue, South County area, a lot of older areas platted originally as Indian River Farms Water Control District areas.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we compromised at eight, but you know that's probably not the end of it. You're going to hear-
That'll never get to that.
The specific reasoning was, I thought we said logical, real, scientific.
Paving of roads or something.
Blighted areas.
On the blighted areas, the next comment was a suggestion to incorporate references in the EAR to blighted areas around the city of Felsmere, and staff has updated analysis section to include that.
Jason asked for that for me.
Yes.
With respect to TNDs, a comment was made that TNDs should only be processed through the county's PD process and should not be allowed through administrative permit approval. Staff had suggested initially that it be, they be allowed as administrative permit. And this relates to, well, I guess, if I go back to the slide, the intent of this policy is to incentivize TND development by making the TND approval process more streamlined. Keeping TND projects as planned developments makes them more cumbersome to get approved and sets up a less predictable process. As a result, this may limit future applications and limit this form of desired development. Therefore, staff is recommending to keep the new policy as proposed.
So?
Guess that tells you what they think they are. I think the reason this, the discussion on this came up was that the TND, the most TND projects we see are all, usually all fairly large.
I'm not going to explain what TND is.
The TND is a traditional neighborhood design, and these are, these are large. For instance, Point West.
Yeah.
Isn't Liberty Park a TND?
Yes.
And I think that, right or wrong, I mean, I think that that was the concern. If we go to administrative permit approval, it comes to us without public comment, which is, may or may not be right, but that was simply if we follow the rules, approve it if it meets the rules and move on. You know, I appreciate the fact that it's, that maybe the planned developments may be cumbersome and the approval process less than predictable, but I'm not sure, you know, I'm curious to see how the people feel about the size. I don't have as big a problem with this because I think they're well thought out when they get this far. This, they have to jump through a huge number of hoops. But I think that the sheer, just normally, I think the sheer size is what scares people more than anything else. And I don't know if we're ready to make this leap or not. Any other-
Yeah, I have a very strong opinion on that, and that should remain a PD. It should be, still coming through the PD approval process. And maybe in a couple of years when we get our feet wet on this, you know, we might think differently, but we've made a number of changes to the TND on, in the last couple of weeks. The density, the taking the center and putting it on the periphery. I'm very, I feel very strongly this should still stay as a PD. Things like the city Sebastian wanted to put input on the traffic that was being dumped onto their roads, and I think they need to have an opportunity to do that. And I think so do the other residents in the area. So I, I strongly feel-
Are all planned, are all PDs, I was trying to remember, are all PDs public hearings?
Yes, or special exceptions or rezonings. Yes.
And the only, only way, only non-public hearing would be an administrative permit on this?
No. Right.
You know, I, I have mixed emotions. I can't, I don't disagree with what Donna said, but I do know that having sat here as long as I have, the PD process has worked, but I mean, it's, it's, it can be abused. We've abused some people occasionally, as I've been told, a lot. But I mean, not all. Is this something that we can stop or not? You know, if we say no, and I'm sorry.
I don't have that strong a feeling about it. I'd like it to be as Donna wants, but I don't have that strong a feeling about it.
I think she's correct. I'd like to see it followed.
Very. Same.
Well, I mean, I, you know, if you, oh, Greg, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I would support Donna's position.
You know, good or bad, you know, if, if nothing else, consensus says that, and I, you know, it's a 10-year, 10-year process. I would like to see this get to be administrative permit myself because I think it'd be nice, it'd be the way to go, and it would encourage it, which is what I think you're trying to do.
And, and this really, this really wasn't intended to apply to Liberty Park type of TNDs. This is really intended to be TNDs within the urban service area.
Is there a way, is this one of the, is there, is there a way, and this may actually make it more palatable, is there a way to put something like this and split the, put the baby in half and have scale so that, you know, I, you know, I mean, we just hadn't had any TNDs. Everything we've seen is big.
Yeah, but we can do that.
I mean, maybe as a- If you all, if you all do not think that's crazy, is maybe let them go to the point where there's a certain size that is administrative and acreage or density level or something where we can measurable say above that, we have to be a PD. Is that fair for those of you who are less comfortable than others?
Oh, well, let me ask a question then. If the minimum TND is 1,200 acres-
That's Newtown.
That's Newtown. This TND is a traditional neighborhood design. That's a, it could be 100 acres or 700.
Forty acres is a minimum.
Forty starts, right.
Does it make a difference if it's inside the urban service area and outside?
It has to be, it has to be within a mile or attached to. Okay. This has to be attached to the urban service area?
Actually, we really don't propose this exception for the 18.3, the inside and outside. This would be just, and we probably should clarify this. This is just within the urban service area.
That's what bothers me.
Yeah. This would be just within that.
18.3.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's why I'm thinking that, the thing that bothers people, that I've heard, is scale, but I mean, if it's less bothersome and you're not so concerned about it being inside the urban service area because it meets the local, the service area criteria, then we'll, then we can leave it, unless, Donna, you have a problem with that.
I don't know.
I mean, there's a big, I think this thing we're talking about, I won't say apples and oranges, but they are talking about a little different because I think, I think you're thinking Liberty Park.
Mm-hmm.
And the concern is it may or may not be risen, you know.
Yeah, we don't want this to apply to a Liberty Park. That has to be a PD. It has to go through the process.
Was water, um-
That's a DRI.
That was a DRI. Would it have or could it have been a TND?
No.
Not the way, it's not, the design is not meet the criteria because the commercial's not big enough?
No. Basically, the way, it doesn't have a grid system of streets. It's more of a sprawl project.
Okay. Okay. All right. If you clarify, if you clarify it, I think we're okay.
Wasn't Liberty Park a TND?
Oh, yes, it is a TND.
But it's a difference.
But it's a, it's the specific allowance for partially outside the urban service area type of TND. And, and I think what Chairman Hamner said, that, and what I offered was that we can clarify this proposed new policy to relate to just TNDs within, entirely within the urban service area.
Would some, all right.
Kind of like the-
Would Point West be that?
No.
Point West, Point West was both ways?
Yeah.
Okay. So that wouldn't qualify either.
Sunny Side Up, Sunny Side Up would be one that could qualify.
Right. Near 20, I don't know.
And Sunny Side Up had an awful lot of public input.
Actually, Sunny Side Up hasn't come to you yet.
Isn't that the one that-
You're thinking of the home down on Fifth Avenue Southwest and-
Near old Dodge, old Dodge Town.
Oh, that was-
That's not Sunny Side Up.
Heritage is, but Heritage Estates is in the City of Vero Beach. That might be.
And would you consider Heritage Estates a TND?
No.
Okay. I think if you clarify it, we're all right.
They're all subdivisions, then.
Yeah, those are. Yes.
Okay. Bill?
All right. The final comment, under the future land use element, EAR relates to correcting boundaries on one of the maps, and it relates to Indian River Shore existing land use map. The boundaries have been corrected down on that map. It's an attachment towards that end.
Is Indian River Shore happy now?
Yeah. I brought a more updated map.
All right. That, that ends the comments. We went through the future land use element ourselves, and these are the comments. We talked about our comments. I'm open to public hearing. Does anyone from the public care to comment on part of the future land use element? No? Okay. In order to move on, I, I'd like a motion to approve the future land use element as presented by staff, and we move it off the table and move on to the next one.
So moved.
Seconds.
With our change of-
With revisions.
With the revisions we've made. Sorry. Okay. We've got a motion in a second to get Craig and Jerry, I think. All those, Jerry, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's like sign. Okay. Future land use, we can always come back. We have to. Right now, this is off the table. Okay? All right. Who's next? Bill, you doing the next one?
Um, yeah, actually, there's just two more slides and-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, they're two separate, two separate elements, so.
Oh, I was going to say I-
Not the future land use anymore.
Remember, I'm ADD. You got to be quick, bud.
The potable water sub-element, there was one, one comment raised. Objective two target is to connect at least 70% of existing residential units within unincorporated county to regional system. And the comment was made that this target may be, maybe it's too low. And staff has since coordinated with the utilities department staff and changed the target to 75%.
That was the doctor, wasn't it? Oh, dear. Okay. I thought, I couldn't open.
The next element, there was one comment in the recreation and open space element, and the comment was to provide more public access to publicly owned environmental lands. And a new policy, staff's response is a new policy will be added within the conservation element.
Okay.
We're going to get to that when we get to the conservation.
Yeah. Roland's actually going to be up next, talking about coastal management.
Okay. Anybody care to comment on the potable water sub-element in the public? Okay. Commissioners, is, can we approve it as presented?
I make a motion, we approve as presented.
Donna?
Second.
Craig, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's like sign. Okay.
No conversation?
All right. Next is coastal management element.
Did you do the recreation, too? Sorry. Did you do the recreation as well?
No.
Oh, did I? They were intended to be together, so.
All right. I make a, I make a motion that we approve the recreation and open space element EAR.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those approved? Aye. Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, I've got the little slide over here. I was squinting.
I might just go top.
Okay. Roland?
Okay. I'm Roland DeBois, chief of environmental planning. Just going to go over the coastal management element. Again, the comments that were made at the P&amp;Z workshops. First comment had to do with, if you recall, we're looking at a policy to require removal of dead citrus trees from abandoned grows for disease-related purposes. There was a comment at the, at the workshop about-
About the bird habitat.
Right. The bird habitat aspect of dead trees, and we discussed some alternatives to actual physical removal of trees such as defolium. So we expanded the explanation of the new policy concept to include alternatives such as defolium or other treatments.
Okay.
But you had it in the agriculture, in the ag section, too, you commented on this, the same thing.
Right. On trying to remove the trees.
Trying to remove the trees.
Right. This, it came up on the edge of the-
This is actually duplicated in a couple of other ones.
On an old grove on the coast, I guess. But that, it's more important in the ag section than on coastal management, I think, so. But, yeah.
Yeah, we actually covered this again, and I'll go over quick when we hit the conservation because it's, it's again in a couple of elements.
Okay.
But it was discussed when we were talking about coastal management. Another one had to do with property in Vero Beach scrub that was approved as development law treaty preserve. Comment that it should be acquired for conservation as an important scrub. We do have a conservation element policy. Again, this is referring to another element, but it was raised under this coastal management element. We do have a revised conservation element for the county to acquire an additional acreage of scrub on a new target date. We really can't, under our program, guarantee any purchase of any particular property. It's a willing seller program and also dependent on availability of funds, but certainly it's something that could be looked at. But under the policy, we do at least have a revised target for more scrub.
Okay.
Okay. There's another comment about the, we were discussing a policy about reevaluating the oceanfront ultimate setback line, what we call a dune stabilization setback line to move it further westward. There was a comment at the hearing, or workshop about concern about development up to the edge of the beach in the city of Vero Beach. And the explanation is, we are looking at, again, reevaluating that line, evaluating it to see if it is reasonable and feasible to move it westward. However, in any event, it doesn't have jurisdiction in the city of Vero Beach.
You say we're looking at that. Does the county, do we ultimately, does our county have the say-so on that dune setback line? I was-
There's, there's a couple of lines that come into play. You have the state coastal construction control line. They also look at a 30-year erosion line whenever there's an evaluation of erosion.
The 19, I guess, is it 1980?
81.
81 is the front line, no bill fur, and then the next line back is this line?
87.
The current line, we call it the eighty-seven line, which is a jurisdictional line of the state.
That's jurisdictional. When you cross it, you can build, stay certain distance off of eighty-one and then, but you can have to beef up the property accordingly, build accordingly with...
Right, the state honors our line, which we adopted. The old line, we call it, of the coastal construction, the eighty-one line, has the ultimate setback from the ocean.
Okay.
The state does have its own setback requirements based on...
I guess, which, I was thinking the eighty-seven line was this line? Is this, what line is this?
This is the, what we call the eighty-one line.
Oh, this is the eighty-one line?
Yes.
Okay. And we, but I didn't, have we set that ourselves?
Well, what happened was, in 1986, eighty-seven, well, obviously we had the eighty-one state line. And in eighty-one, when they set the line up until eighty-six, eighty-seven, that was actually a line of prohibition, so to speak. When they revised it in eighty-six, eighty-seven, the state changed its position on, because it moved back enough where it encompassed full parcels, at that point, the state started looking at it as line of regulation versus a line of prohibition.
I got you.
County, however, took the position, we should keep that old line as the line of prohibition.
Okay. Our control was prohibiting or, we have the say-so on, okay, that's what I was, when you said you were looking at.
Because it's been 20 years of shows since that happened, we're looking at reevaluating.
Got it.
Okay, we had a comment, one of the policies discussion under public, increasing access to public resources, including beaches. We looked, we had a policy to set a timeframe to construct limited beach access at the Cap'n Forster Hammock Preserve. There was a comment or concern at one of the workshops that we shouldn't be putting parking on the oceanfront side of A-1A, but on the overall preserve property, but have, just have people park at the Jungle Trail parking lot and hike across A-1A. Staff has concerns about the safety aspect of that. We have all types of public who would be visiting. A-1A really isn't set up for pedestrian crossing at that point. The other point is, it's part of an approved commission, approved management plan that we have some limited access. The proposal is very limited, 10 spaces or less, and we're recommending there be no change in that proposed policy.
What kind of parking are you gonna have? I mean, the surface?
What's envisioned is someone to like to see grape access, that they have a very limited, essentially just a meandering boardwalk to a crossover and a few parking spaces right on A-1A.
The surface of the parking on the A-1A?
That hasn't been determined.
I would try to get something, I know Mr. Davis doesn't like these penetrating-type services, but I think we should go in that general direction, so that rainwater and stormwater can go in the ground.
Praying through the pavers.
Right. Okay, but I mean, you, I guess, on this particular comment, you don't have any problem with this, do you? About people running across A-1A?
I think 10 spaces is plenty. I mean, I would like to see them start out smaller, and if there's really a desperate need.
Running across A-1A, we may have somebody look like a wreck.
Have one handicapped and maybe four or five of the others.
The policy that we're talking about doesn't get into the design details. It just says we're gonna shoot for a target date to put access improvements. That'll be reviewed...
You have no more than 10 written, and I'd like to have...
That's what's in the plan that was approved, is what I'm referring to, just as an explanation.
I see.
Okay.
Okay, next, under objective eight, which was also having to do with access points, there's an existing policy about, that indicates when the county does public funding towards private beach renourishment, that there's a condition that there be some access for the public. And it was a concern whether or not the county could require that. Staff's position is that it is an existing policy that we recommend be maintained, and there is a condition on the existing policy that the public access would take into consideration the existing neighborhood and resource.
Basically means that there's space, if you can even get, if you can get a spot.
I don't know how you can, how about our legal eagle down here? You can't, you can't just tell somebody that we're suddenly going to allow people to walk across your property to the beach. I don't care if you've renourished the beach or not. I mean, have you, have you guys gone into this?
No, we haven't gone into it, but I think generally you're correct. I mean, you just can't go to a landowner, if they're not proposing some type of development.
The policy, though, is basic, we discussed this, is get, is if there's available access that works, the county would try, is saying the county would pick it up. We had, Jim showed us a bunch of access points and...
I know, but...
When you move to the beach in your new mansion over there, we're not gonna come to your house or walk through your...
I'm telling you, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get there, sir. I mean, the city of Vero Beach has, is in the covenants of the land there, that they have access through certain areas down near South Beach, et cetera, and there's a whole bunch of them, but unless it's in the land covenants, you ain't, you're not gonna get there.
Okay. Policy, though, is okay, right?
Policy is one thing, getting there is another.
Okay.
Okay, there was a comment at one of the workshops about, one of the sections of our coastal management, we talk about some of the main wildlife corridors that should be targeted for protection through various methods. There's a comment that when we talk about the Atlantic coastal ridge, we should also make reference to its importance as an act of recharge, primary recharge area. Staff's position is that the particular section that was being talked about was specifically geared towards wildlife corridor discussions. We do have separate protections of the Atlantic coastal sand ridge with references to it as a primary recharge area in the act of recharge element, so we felt that it wasn't necessary to revise that particular section that was being discussed. But we do think it's covered.
Anybody? Okay.
Okay, again, this is covered under a couple elements, but again, it was mentioned in the coastal management, which does have certain policies on public access to resources. There's comments about county stepping up timeframes to provide public access improvements on the various conservation properties we've acquired, also providing restroom facilities, particularly on island properties. We did propose revision on, we're proposing two revisions, both in the conservation element, which we'll reference again, but essentially to specifically apply for funding and make progress and move forward in trying to get some restrooms on the properties that the county owns and controls, which are the Prang Island and the Lost Tree Islands. We're also looking at revising an existing policy related to county conservation lands to make it a policy to actually put it in writing in a policy to move forward and to get the public access improvements going on a defined timeframe within two years after plan adoption. We've already adopted plans...
Was a one year after the adoption not considered reasonable, or, I mean, because the management plan is one year from purchase, I mean, so it's really two years from purchase if you did one year here instead of two, so we're three years from purchase.
Right, but...
I think the way this, was what this means, right?
That's correct.
Because we have a plan, we have a policy that says a management plan is within the one year of purchase, and then this would be within two years of that, so it'd be three years from purchase.
Right, and again, you know, to be straightforward, we did qualify that in the proposed policy with funding availability, because, but it is something, obviously, it's a policy...
There goes the killer decimals in the wrong place. Point zero, two oh point.
But we're trying to make it very specific in a policy, so if someone wants, is OMC looking at it, they can point to the policy, what's going on here.
The Lost Tree Islands have a management plan already in place. When we brought that through the city, county, state, there was a huge management plan that went in place there. Is that going to have some conflict with putting toilets, et cetera, on that?
I don't think, we do have a conceptual management plan, and as you know, we have the existing Joey Arman park, which is in somewhat disrepair right now, but I think it would not be in conflict to consider putting a restroom at that location.
Okay, yeah, at that one north location there, where it's give or cut.
The conceptual plan are exactly two access points envisioned. One is the existing Joey Arman, to fix that up, make it more usable, and then another more discreet access on the other group of islands.
Yeah.
So that is in the plan, and we are doing various things out there, but we do need to...
What about boat ramps?
Don't do that.
No.
We do have that addressed as well. I can, we'll get to that in just a moment.
And the two years, I mean, I think, so that's three years it's gonna take for implementing?
Yeah, if the funding's available.
Main thing is funding, that's the...
That's the killer. Killer be just struck.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's...
It's a policy to try to do...
We haven't had a timeframe, so it's not a bad, I mean, it's a good start anyway.
Well, I mean, he's got the out of the time, the money, so that's why, I mean, I can't, I don't see why we have to have two years. If you have one year and you don't have the money, that's something else again, but, I mean, I just follow the management...
The other point I wanna make is, unless we don't wanna be going for grants or funding, and we wanna come up with some money from somewhere, that'd make things go a lot quicker.
Yeah.
But if you're trying to apply for grant funds, you have to wait for the cycle. That takes you almost a year in and of itself, and there's various aspects of a looking at it.
And there are strings attached to those grants and funds too, that are not really helpful.
But some of these grants come in, and then they take two or three years before they're implemented, because there's not enough staff available. So I think you need to have, you know, something stronger there.
It just takes patience, my son.
I don't, I mean, I don't know that, I don't have as big a problem with the two years. I was supposed to get my own self straight, where you have the one, then the two, it's three years.
It comes up big.
I have, I have a more of a, when we get to the implementation of the plans themselves, that's what I think that you need to do. So I, but if, I can go along with one year or two years myself on this, if you're gonna do it, but it doesn't, I don't think it has a big, a big problem one way or the other. Anybody else have any feelings, one way or the other?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. We'll let Dick, we're gonna hit 'em on the plan.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, we did have a new comment that I wanna bring out. It wasn't a comment from the planning and zoning workshop, but we did have a marine advisory committee meeting this past week, and they did have one comment in particular. We had, we had a presentation on removal of derelict vessels or abandoned boats from the Indian River after the 2004 hurricanes. And it was recommended that we adopt a specific policy for, under post-disaster recovery, to have more specific procedures for marine debris removal, which will help the county seek FEMA funding in particular to help clean up. So we are recommending an additional policy based on that comment.
It was supposed to be a window, a one-time grant that came up to do that after the two hurricanes came through. I mean, that's, you're gonna, there ain't any way to pay for that, it's super expensive and...
I believe, working through the coastal engineering staff, I believe they were able to secure some funding from a couple of sources, including, I think, Find was one of the sources. It took them a couple of years to actually finish the project. I guess it's a lot more complicated than it seems when you have to, when you're removing something that might be of value.
I don't think anybody has a problem with that, do we? Okay, Roland?
Okay. That's it for the coastal element.
Okay. Coastal public management element, anybody in the public care to speak? All right, gentlemen, no one cares to speak, we need to move this far.
Move to adopt as presented.
Craig? Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry?
Pull it out of him.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, opposed.
Screaming right along at the speed of dark.
Right. Go ahead.
Okay, on conservation, we had a comment on requiring inspections every three years or so for onsite disposal systems or septic systems, and we're adding a new policy. I think this is also covered in another element, but to add a policy to get with the health department to study the feasibility of establishing a regular maintenance program.
Without a timeframe here?
We're really gonna rely on the health department's expertise.
Good.
Next, again, this is, again, kinda relates to something we already discussed about putting portable toilets or restrooms on the islands, and we are looking at a new policy to call for that, more permanent-type facilities on county-controlled islands.
And you could work with the health department on that also, I think. It's a health issue.
Yeah.
And using some of the funds maybe that are available through septic tank violations and stuff like that, I think it'd be very appropriate.
Okay, this is one we actually already covered, but it is in this element on the citrus tree removal, so I won't dwell on it.
Okay.
Oh, we, this is a comment to make our, our policy more specific on the issue of referencing management plans and review by the conservation lands advisory committee, so we're proposing to revise policy to be more specific in that standpoint, and also what we just discussed about improvements associated within the timeframe of management plan adoption. There's also the comment about reevaluating the county's conservation lands management staff as far as location, expansion of staff, whether there should be volunteer coordinator. We did have an existing policy that we're proposing to revise with a new date for that to happen, for the county to consider hiring additional management staff and to consider establishing a distinct conservation lands management section, either the parks or planning division.
Hmm, good.
On the issue of boat ramps, we had the comment about county should identify low-impact locations for boat ramps in the South County. I think we did reference a policy in the coastal management here where we are, we do have a policy for the county to seek funding to proceed and construct a boat ramp at the Gifford Dock Road. Now, that's in South Central County, not the South County. And essentially, from staff perspective, we feel that there's, we've already done a search over the years, there's been quite a bit of discussion about the need for more boat ramps in South County, but really, there are really no viable options that we could find, so we're not recommending any changes at this time.
Were you, in South County, when you said boat ramps, were you thinking more in terms of kayak, I mean, like launching sites for low-impact?
I was just looking at the whole gamut.
Because, I mean, this, this element says there won't be a boat ramp in the South County, and that's, I mean, I'm thinking boat ramps like powerboats and flats boats, and I tend to agree with that, because I don't think there's any place for one.
You'll never find a roof for a round dock.
But that does not mean that they're not spots, like in the Russell property where you could get a canoe in or go in and launch, and I don't think, I'm not sure that applies here, but that's not the intent here, is not to have that, but the intent is not to have a heavy-duty ramp, right?
Correct. I was envisioning...
And they do have Round Island, which is...
On the other side, yeah. Okay.
And that's really, that's the...
That was all we talked about on the conservation element. Anybody out there care to speak on the conservation element? Okay. Need a motion?
As presented.
Craig? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay. Transportation element.
Hi, Phil Mattson, I'm the Indian River County MPO staff director, and I'm gonna follow the format here and go over those comments that you raised at the planning and zoning commission meeting. First comment is to give priority to building the unconstructed parts of the extended roadway grid. In looking through our policies, policy 1.2 spells out the criteria we use to prioritize roads, and listed among 1.2 is what we call logical extensions of county facilities, so therefore, we think it meets the bill. And I'm also gonna tell you that we could probably meet this, the intent of your comment through another mechanism, and that's the MPO long-range plan. In the long-range plan, we actually go through the exercise of taking our anticipated future tax and breaking it down to project implementation sets over time, so we can definitely add to or weight the criteria for continuing the grid in that process. Oh, here it comes. Next, next comment, level of service. In this, we noticed that there's both an uneven distribution of volume across the levels of service and toyed with the idea of raising the level of service. We saw a few visuals in the last one. One visual indicated that DOT is going more toward a level of AB service for free flow, CD for good flow with company, and EF for obstructed flow. We've also seen that would be very costly to raise level of service to a higher level than what we've adopted now. The tables are what they are. These are widely accepted engineering standards and methodology. An applicant can substitute a traffic study for what's on the tables. Therefore, we're really not proposing anything in this regard.
Cowards.
Guilty.
Sorry.
Not...
Blind, 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 Herman.
George wants to see.
Next one, county should do a trip count of all local schools and use these local trip rates in lieu of the IT rate. I think we can do this. Staff will add a new policy or amend policy 1.4 to indicate a new trip generation rate will be developed at some point in the future.
What point in the future?
Yeah. There you go, being realistic.
One thing Bob might not have mentioned, we're really not forming policies right now, the wording of the policy. We're indicating the policies we will be adding, so I think we will probably...
He did it, he just, and he doesn't like that this is...
Actually, I think we're gonna do this before a new policy actually makes it into the comp plan.
This'll be in the next year.
Thank you.
Because we're gonna, we're gonna be monitoring the Imagine School sites.
You're gonna have to do this fairly soon.
Yeah, and we've talked to Chris Moore.
I cannot tell you how much I appreciate your cooperation on that one. Thank you very much.
You're telling me that...
No, I'm serious, I'm not being facetious at all, seriously.
This next comment was, I think, more of a observation than a request for an actual policy. It was noted that school buses, in some cases, can't enter older subdivisions if they weren't laid out with a proper turnaround or cul-de-sac at the end. It's an issue we're aware of, we can work through this at SPTA meetings, school staff working committee meetings, and also LDR changes.
This is a school board issue, period, right? That's what we said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, one thing that Bob put up early, in an earlier slide, we received 25 comments on the transportation element. Those weren't 25 unique comments. Probably 24 of those comments were about this one, install transit shelters. We've, we've heard that at our citizens committee, at our technical advisory committee, certainly from the planning and zoning committee. We're aware, we got the message loud and clear, we are putting this in under objective nine, and no changes are proposed.
Let's get off the road and speed up the traffic, that's what I'm in trying to do.
Absolutely. You know, the challenge will be on how to implement them, and I think we have a few strategies for that too. Expedite right-of-way acquisition, we've heard your comment on this, and we will be adding a new policy on this as well. It'll reflect the county's new eminent domain procedures, which are currently being developed. They include notice to owner, written offer procedures, et cetera. So as those emerge, we'll be adding it as a policy. And that concludes the transportation element. I'll roll back if I can.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience care to comment on transportation? Okay.
Bob, or Phil, when you say the grid, continue the grid, there's a certain level of detail. If you, if you complete the grid for every bloody block, it's just, I mean, Bob and I have had this conversation.
You were, when we did this, was when you were out.
Was that in Carolina? Was that in Carolina?
Yeah, I have, there were two or three pet peeves that certain of us had, you know, so you missed me on my podium.
Okay.
Had to do with the traffic, I did my dance. Traffic slowing down, I always thought we were, we, we were convenient in dropping several roads down to Level D.
Yeah.
It allowed development to continue, which was fine, but on the other hand, I think that we get behind, and it doesn't happen, but the other part was, is that we're forcing the development of the roads, 60, 58, 27th, 43rd, which is naturally where the development are, and we're not finishing the grid. We could do 12th Street, 4th Street, 8th Street, 66th Street's out, 82nd Street, you know, we, there, there are roads that could be finished, I think, that should have been finished years ago.
I just don't want them to go to a lower level that's going to, that'll just clog everything, you need to keep it open somewhere.
So, they heard, I think they, we all agree with that, yeah, they got the message. This is an MPO deal, is basically what it really is, I think.
I withdraw my comments.
The, the last item about the, the right-of-way expedition, or acquisition, though, is we're waiting on Jim Davis to get that convenience store on 27th before one of us retires, you or me.
It's a legal problem.
Okay. And we need to move this along.
Move to the, transportation element.
I know, I just, all right, we got a motion, Donna seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Thank you.
Are we through yet?
All right, we're getting there. Which one have you got next?
Hey, I'm going to, that's, that's all we have for the actual comments from the P&amp;Z that we were going to present on. Let me wrap this up real quickly and say that we've met the requirements of the state in developing this year, all the provisions of Rule 9J5 that governed it were incorporated. We've incorporated appropriate public comments as well, we've responded in writing where we received written comments on our ear. We've incorporated Planning and Zoning Commission Quality Development Workshop recommendations, and we've spelled out the highlights of those recommendations for you. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the BCC transmit the county's ear to the Department of Community Affairs in Tallahassee, and as we mentioned, the process is followed up in the, in the circular diagram at the beginning by ear-based plan amendments, which will be occurring later.
Thank you. We, the, one ear that we did not talk about, and I don't know whether we need to, was economic, I mean, it had more comments than anything, but it's also the most detailed. Anybody have any comments up here? We went through it pretty well the last time, okay. We're to, to a point where we can consider the balance of these and, and then in total, and I'd ask if, if, must there, anyone else in the public care to comment about any element that we've had or not had spoken, spoken about tonight, or had up here tonight?
Now's the time.
Okay. The recommendations to move this forward with our, I think that we should do that with our, with the revisions that we've talked about, those of them tonight, so if, if anyone agrees, or, we need a motion. Someone?
Some moves.
Greg, second?
Second.
Greg, second. All those in favor of moving it forward as presented with our revisions, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign? Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, you all have done a heck of a job on this.
Wow.
I mean, it is, it is a huge amount of work. I know that we've been bogged down in sand mines and a few other things up here, and it took two workshops and a, an evening alone on the elements, going through them, so we've seen them quite a bit, but you, you, you are, the staff really needs to be, you know, commended for this, because you did a heck of a job. It's, I don't think, unless people that are really close to, looking at these books, I don't think people know how much work goes into this, so.
Okay.
Actually, let me just, for anyone watching, we have all of these elements online that people can access on our website. If anyone goes to www.iircgov.com, and then they go to county departments and planning, there is a link to EAR and all of our PowerPoint presentations, draft years, everything is, is on that site, so people can access this information, look at it, and we're still accepting any comments or recommendations that the public may have.
One thing before anybody in the public hits the print button, they need to know there's about a thousand pages involved, so please be careful.
Look at the number of pages. Okay. Any other commissioners' matters? Planning matters.
Just real briefly, and several of you were there at the...
We don't want to hear this.
October 6th mining special meeting that the Board of County Commissioners had on mining, most of the 38 recommendations or concepts that you all made to the Board of County Commissioners were accepted. A few things dropped out. The considering GPS did, did drop out. Seismic profile data for specific project sites dropped out, but the county is moving forward on the overall recommendation to get that data county-wide, but most of the things, I, I think, pretty much remained intact. There was a little less emphasis on contracting out for law enforcement, I think more emphasis on pulling bonds and, and setting that forward the way that you all had recommended. So, just to let you all know, the mining regulations will be going to the Professional Services Advisory Committee on October 23rd, and then we'll come to you all in November. And November's one of those months where the, the second Thursday, which I think this year's November 13th, would be the normal date that we would meet, but fourth Thursday's Thanksgiving, so we tend to have just one meeting in November, and so I anticipate that November 13th will be the meeting when you all will take up the mining regulations, and then it would go on to the board at a public hearing in December. And that's all that I had.
Did you mention a special exception was taken on that?
Actually, that was the highlight, thank you very much.
I knew that was coming.
Just, just went on a little too quick there. Yeah, one of the items that dropped out and got a lot of energetic debate was the special exception, whether to go from administrative permit to special exception, and the board decided to not make that change, and instead to have it remain as administrative permit, but to add that there is a special notice requirement mailing out before the P&amp;Z meeting that the administrative permit is considered, and do that extended, expanded notice. So, the process would remain the same, but there would be a special notice provision.
You know, as, as an aside, and I hope, and I'm sure they considered this, is that the only dilemma is once you, you're inviting the public to a meeting, they can't comment on it.
Yeah.
And I, you know, sometimes the public gets upset when they get here and they can't, and they may or may not be able to comment. The reality is, and they, we, although we do allow them to do it a lot, just out of courtesy, but the fact is, is administrative permits are really us and you and, and specific rules, so.
They'll just have to trust you guys.
That's right, and that's what we get paid the big bucks for, right?
So, what's the purpose of having it, then, a comment?
What's the purpose of having it, what?
Of notifying people, I mean, they can come and talk to us as commissioners on these issues?
Yes, just like you're, you invite them to do it now.
Or, or are we inhibited in talking about this? Can you talk to them?
I don't think this is...
No, no, it's still, it's still quasi-judicial, there's still ex parte communication provisions on it, but what, I, I think what, and it would be the same, I think it'd be the same on a special exception, somebody's invited to come to attend, it's a quasi-judicial matter. What you take into consideration are facts that a resident, you know, brings to bear that, that sheds light on whether a requirement is met or not, or if it's being implemented properly or not. I, I don't think the public comment would necessarily be that different between administrative permit, as long as the chair allows the comment...
Right.
Comments to be made.
Just that, that a lot of times we hear, it's not compatible, and that's really not an issue when you're dealing with administrative...
Who doesn't admit that?
I understand, but it has to be definitive, so, that's all. I was just making that comment again, because that's the one reason that I thought it might be...
I thought, I thought you did a real good job in presenting our, our viewpoint.
A fair, did I do a fair job?
I thought you did a real nice job. But, you know, we might not all have a chairman that is so fair, and so with these, in the future, with, with the advisor, these people that are coming in and wanting to discuss this issue, do they, would it be better if they put it in writing to the staff, or how do you, how do you want the people, the folks out there to respond when, when a, when a mine is coming into their neighborhood?
As long as it's given to the clerk, and she distributes to everybody, they can, they can put it in.
So, that will be spelled out, then, when you send out a notice, is how they can express themselves?
Well, the only problem is, lots of times we get it that night, and it's two pages long, and we haven't had an opportunity to read it before the meeting, so that's really not fair to the public either.
Part of, that's, this is part of, and I, if I understand this correctly, this is part of the dilemma that we face up here, and that is that administrative, they're really, their comments, unless they pertain, I think, to specific, I'm not even sure, if they, they pertain in some specific way to a specific rule, then they're, they don't have any bearing.
Right with...
And that is, that is a very difficult situation, you'll, you'll see it happen occasionally where they, and we see it.
A good argument, but it doesn't have a rule, a code that this violates.
Now, in fairness, in fairness to, that's part of what I explained, is, and I'll say again, is that the 38, the reason we have such a lengthy deal is, we, we were trying to touch every possible area that we could think of, and I, you know, the commission in their own wisdom decided to do that, and it's fine, I mean, I...
And let me add one thing, because this came out as well to, in the board discussion, obviously, any decision that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes can be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners, and one other item that they added to the special notice was to waive the appeal fee for any party, whether it's the applicant or the people, to appeal, to get in front of the Board of County Commissioners, to make the appeal not a fee cost to anybody who wants the board to review your decision. So, I forgot to mention that, but now that we're discussing it more at length, I thought[1751.49]